Good evening. Welcome to the April 25th, 2024 Town of Eastchester Planning Board Meeting. If everyone rise for the pleasure of the audience, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation from the God of God, indivisible, infinite, just.
Will take attendance, Mr. Phil Nemisak?
Present.
Lauren Goodrich?
Present.
Jim Bonano is present. Joseph Rabino?
Present.
And Michael Fortuno?
Present.
Guess we'll approve some minutes first. Mr. Nemisak, have you had a chance to review the March 21st Planning Board meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I circulated an email to the entire group, Noel included, with my proposed revisions to it.
Thank you for your efforts. Then I make a motion to approve the minutes from the March 21st, 2024 Planning Board meeting.
Subject to the revisions that I circulated, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Let's see, there's one application that we've been tracking up here, which will not be appearing tonight, and that is the application for 2327 360 White Plains Road, otherwise known as the addition at the Chase Bank on White Plains Road. Let's see, so there's one administrated issue that we have to go through before we get to the applications, and that is the 42 Maple Avenue subdivision. Let's see, so this is more about who's taking lead agency. The approval of the redivision of the tax lots into two lots, creating one new building lot. Application was previously appeared before the planning board for the public hearing on January 25th, 2024. We issued a notice intent to be the secret lead agency on that date. Therefore, I think 30 days have passed, so we could make the motion.
Correct.
Right, so since 30 days have passed, I can now make a motion to designate the Eastchester Planning Board as the lead agency for the review of this application, 2401 42 Maple Avenue subdivision pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, now we can get down to business. A number of applications, if you don't have the agenda, I'll just run through them really quickly. We're looking at 470 White Plains Road, which is the Kremel Cafe. The next one we're looking at is Total Form Fitness on 95 Montgomery. Next one is Arch Care on White Plains Road. The fourth one is 122 Montgomery, followed by 600 White Plains Road, little baby, followed by 47 Interlaken, followed by 14 Shady Lane, and hopefully, not too late, we'll just hear from the folks from 249 Main Street. Okay, it's a long agenda, so could I ask that you guys just sort of keep it short, keep it succinct? I don't want to cut down your time, but we'd all like to go home. I hear the draft is tonight.
NFL draft tonight.
Yeah.
Perpetual date of hope for New York Jets fans.
Go Giants.
Maybe we can hear the end of it.
My name is John Yanacito. I'm an architect, and I'm representing Kremel Cafe, the proposed tenant at 470 White Plains Road. And the tenant space is highlighted in yellow on the site plan. This application was presented to the planning board back in December 7th of 2023 for preliminary review of a special permit for the proposed type-one food service establishment. The proposed scope of work will include a change of use from dry cleaners to a coffee shop. All the proposed work is internal, there's no proposed work or changes to the exterior of the structure. As per the referral from the planning board, the application was presented to the zoning board on January 9th, 2024, and an area variance was granted on March 12th for the increase to existing non-conforming off-street parking requirement. And also, as stated at December 7th meeting, the proposed use will comply with all standard and individual requirements for the type-one food service establishment. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I remember being favorably impressed with this application when it first came before us, and now that it has the variances it needs, I'm good with it. There are no changes since the last time you appeared before us?
Correct, nothing changed.
Yep, okay.
I don't think I was at the meeting that you presented, Mr. Yanacito, so I'm leaving it up to the team here.
I'm sorry?
I said, I don't think I was present at the meeting when you presented this initially, so I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Leave it up to the fine people here to ask any that were. If not, we're going to see if the public, this is an open public hearing. It was opened on December 7th, so if there's any questions from the public regarding this application, please come up. So that, so then I'm going to close the public hearing, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on this application, 2334 Kremel Cafe, 470 White Plains Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see, so. We're good? Then this is a special permit, right?
Correct.
So I make a motion to find that this application, 2334 Kremel Cafe, 470 White Plains Road, meets the applicable special use permit standards as explained in the applicant submissions and during the public hearing on this application, and to approve this application as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Okay.
I like this efficiency.
Very good.
Okay, good evening again. My name is John Yanacito. I'm an architect, and I'm representing Total Form Fitness, the proposed first-floor tenant at 95 Montgomery Avenue. And the tenant space is highlighted on the site plane, site plan. This application was presented to the planning board back on December 7th, 2023 also, for preliminary review of a special permit for the proposed indoor recreation and family entertainment facility. The proposed scope of work will include a change of use from office space to a personal fitness center. All proposed work is internal, and no changes to the exterior of the structure. As per the referral from the planning board, the application was presented to the zoning board on January 9th, 2024, and three variances were granted on March 12th under a conditional approval. The first was for an area variance for the increase to the existing non-conforming parking requirement. The second was for the required building setbacks for the indoor recreation and family entertainment use. And the third was for the hours of operation for the indoor recreation and family entertainment use. The approval of these variances is subject to the condition that the facility has to be used as a personal fitness center, where all training sessions are by appointment only, and all conducted on a one-on-one basis with the client and a trainer. The maximum number of occupants at any given times is restricted to 12 people, six clients and six trainers. So that was the condition of the approval of the variances. And that's it. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does that condition of approval, the restriction in particular on the number of individuals who can occupy the facility, is that going to present any type of problem?
No, because the owner of the fitness center basically said maximum would be 12 people at any given time in the gym. Most of the time, it's less, because everything's by appointment, and it's one-on-one with a trainer.
Can you just clarify, so it's a fitness-centered gym, but it also has an entertainment area in the back? What's the?
Well, no, I think that's just the special use that it falls under. Any kind of gym or personal fitness center falls under that special use, so that's what they call it.
Got it.
There's no entertainment here.
So it's only?
Only working out.
It's one-on-one sessions or maximum group of up to 12 people?
12 people, yeah. Six clients and six trainers at any given time. And usually, the appointments are one hour, spread apart one hour at a time, and sometimes you only have two people and two trainers.
Hopefully not.
Thanks.
Any more questions from us, guys?
No.
This is also an open public hearing. It was opened also on December 7th, so if there's any questions from the public, please come forward.
Going once, going twice?
We're good. So then I'm making a motion to close the public hearing on this application, 2335 Total Form Fitness, 99 Montgomery Ave. Yeah, 99 Montgomery Ave.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I have a rather lengthy condition to read, just for the record, it's pretty much similar to what you just said, but I'm just going to read it. It's the same thing you guys agreed with with the zoning board, I'm just going to put it here, so it goes on the record with the planning board, too. So it's in two places, so just bear with me, it's rather loyally. I make a motion to find that application, 2335 Total Form Fitness, 95 Montgomery Avenue, meets the applicable special use permit standards as explained in the applicant submissions and during the public hearing on this application, and to approve this application subject to the following condition. The applicant has represented the proposed facility, we have personalized fitness center, where all training sessions are by appointment only and conducted on a one-on-one basis with a client and a trainer. The maximum number of occupants at any given time will be 12 people, six clients, six trainers. Analysis as to the special permit use criteria, particularly with regard to provision of off-site park, street parking, was based on these representations. Therefore, use of the facility in a manner other than described in this condition will be a violation of this permit, of this special use permit. No change in the operation of the use that would increase the scope of the use beyond that described in this condition may be undertaken unless a modification to this approval is granted by the planning board. With that, with that condition, I make a motion to approve this application, 2335 Total Form Fitness. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a nice evening.
Nice seeing you.
No more.
Next application is 2337 Arch Care, 265 White Plains Road.
Good evening, Board members. My name is William Schneider with PSNS Engineering, and with me tonight is Mr. Fred Munt, also with PSNS Engineering, and we're here representing Arch Care, 265 White Plains Road. Last time we were before you, we had showed you some of the front of the building and some landscaping, and we wanted to show you an improved landscaping plan for the front of the building as you look at it directly up that slope. And we also have some photos, which Mr. Munt can show you, about what the site looked like previously, and you can see there's a sharp contrast. So I'll let Mr. Munt explain some of the changes that were made since the last time we were here.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. The first thing, I know everybody's most interested in the hillside restoration there, so we'll get to that in a minute, but the first thing I wanted to touch base on was just the review letter that we received from Joe Tramelli yesterday afternoon. We did take a look through those comments, I don't know if you want me to pick through them specifically, but I think that basically Mr. Tramelli's memo here stated that we had complied with, or at least satisfied, all of the comments that he had previously. There was one on stormwater, one on the exposed rock face going up along the driveway, the permit with the Village of Tuckahoe DPW and Westchester County DPW for work within the right-of-way. There was a question about the retaining wall near the concrete pads on the side of the building, and then a cross-section of the armored slope, which we'll talk about in a minute here. The last comment that he left open for interpretation is the one that we're going to review tonight, which is the hillside restoration. So unless, again, you want me to dive into any of those comments specifically, we can do that, otherwise, we can focus here.
It's been so long since we've seen it, that retaining wall that was initially approved a long time ago.
Yes.
Do we have any, do we remember what that looks like on the application, or?
So I don't have a rendering of that specifically, what I did pull, and I can distribute to the board after tonight, is just some sample data of what that looks like from the company's website. It's a pretty standard block-facing wall. It's actually going to, it has a brick aesthetic to it, so it's going to look a little similar to the existing building here, and it's going to run, again, up along the side of the driveway. All you'll be able to see from the roadside, and I can switch to another plan here real So this won't be exactly the best plan to show this on, but where you're going to see this retaining wall from the roadway is pretty much right at the entrance here, because one of the things we had to do to combat the fire was expand the, sorry, was expand the driveway to accept fire trucks coming in and out. So the two things we needed to do there were, one, widen it, so in this direction on the hillside here, there's a pretty steep slope that came down to the existing driveway. So by pushing that out, the driveway extends out another four feet or so past where it does today, and then in order to make up the grade there, we were looking at a retaining wall, and that, you know, we want to set back another three feet off of the roadway, so it's not right on top of us. And that was the reason for that right at the entrance here. It is going to sit back a little bit from the road, you could see, we wanted to stay outside of the right-of-way there, so it is going to set back about 10 feet from the road, it's going to be about four to five feet tall at its highest point in the corner there. Really, from Midland over here, the rest of the retaining wall, which was in question, is closer to the building, this is where we were hoping to use some of the exposed existing rock foundation. You really can't see it from the road, I did drive by the site, it's not visible from the road, so you're really only looking at a small portion of wall that's right here at the entrance. And again, I can provide some of that product data if the board would like that.
Where's the gymnasium? Where does it sit?
Right here.
Right there, okay.
So we're going to focus now on the slope that you could see from Midland?
Yes.
I know, also, I think we asked that you bring in, like, an idea of what the wall and the driveway would look like from Midland?
With the retaining wall as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have something like that?
I don't have anything like that. The only thing I have, which I can grab it out of my bag, is an existing picture of that driveway, and, you know, I can highlight it to show roughly where things will be, but...
Okay, cool. We'll do it at the end, keep going where you're going at. Thank you.
Okay, so this is, again, looking from the intersection of Midland. This is the hillside that we're looking to restore, we had previously come up with an armored riprap slope to, one, help with stabilizing that slope, and again, you know, there's been a lot of rock that's been removed on that driveway because of some of the grade changes we need to make the detention system going in, so we were looking to reuse that as part of a stabilization here. Based on the feedback we got, I think the two questions really that were popping up here is, one, we didn't want the aesthetic of exposing the hillside too much, but we also wanted to, if you will, expose it enough to really highlight this wonderful-looking building. So what we've done since we saw you last month was, you'll recall, we kind of had a very soldiers-in-a-row line of trees there, they were all mostly evergreens. What we've done, per your suggestion last month, is we really staggered the tree placement throughout the hillside, we're actually bringing things a little bit lower, we didn't want to go too low on the hill, because we do have existing trees that will remain there. What we will probably look at, what we will look at doing is cleaning up a little bit of the debris down at the bottom, just to, you know, clean up the aesthetic at the bottom of the hill. But really, what we're doing is we're introducing trees up and down the slope here, so it's going to cover a lot more of that hillside, it's going to give us green there. You can see we have a few red buds mixed in, so that will give us color throughout the year in the warm seasons. There was a question last month about the Green Giant arbivites. We still would like to keep those, because as you can see, there's a lot of very tall trees here, and we want to match the aesthetic pretty well after they've hit their full growing period. But what we've looked to do this time was, instead of having them in the middle of our planting area here, we have them kind of on the outskirts of the building, so that you can really create sort of a channel to view the building with, and they won't interrupt the building too much. And I think the last thing I wanted to note here, before you guys have any questions, is there was also a question about lighting here. You know, we really want to broadcast this building, so what we're looking at doing at this point in time, I think that the main focus of the building wants to be the center here, that's really where a lot of the aesthetic is, so what we're looking to do is provide, at the top of this hill, you'll recall, we have a decorative fence, and right at the base of that fence, we'll plan on sitting a few uplights. We're going to focus and have two focus on the center portion here that will broadcast upward and really cover that portion of the building, and then we will set one at each corner of the building to really encompass the rest of the building footprint there. And they'll be, they'll be on a timer system, they'll set to come on, you know, 30 minutes or so before sunset, so you'll get a really nice visual of the building when you're driving through the intersection or walking around.
It is a beautiful building. Is that, that's a picture you guys took from the intersection?
Yes.
Recently, I guess, that's relatively recently, that photo?
Yes, correct.
Cool. Is there, I know you did the lighting, is there a plan showing it, or it's just, I think it was just mentioned?
For lighting is just mentioned at this point, we were, when we, before we had a chance to submit a few weeks ago for the board, we were going back and forth with the architect, one of the things we wanted to do was make sure that the spotlights and the uplights weren't going to clash with any of the sconces or anything like that that might be on the building, so we were going back and forth with the architect a bit on that, and that's, over the last, you know, week or so, we've been able to kind of settle on the location and our strategy for doing so.
Sure.
So certainly, you know, if the board would like, as a condition of approval, we can show that on the plan as well.
Some sort of lighting, okay, cool.
And the plan has also been updated to include all of the tree locations as well, so you can see it scattered more around the hillside there.
Now, I imagine you've given us these?
Yes. So the main thing I wanted to focus on highlighting here, and I don't know if you want me to try to bring that up, so the...
Yeah, you might as well, so we could the public see it.
Yeah, sure. Let me see the best way to do this.
There's clips up there, do you need?
Oh, perfect, okay.
Can you slide it under one of those clips in the corner?
There we go. How's that looking?
Yep.
All right. So a couple pictures that we wanted to highlight here. The first one is to show sort of a, we'll call it an inside view of the hillside, this was taken before even we got our initial planning board approval. But what we wanted to highlight here is, you know, there is certainly a mass of trees here, and, you know, part of the project here with the site plan amendment was with the utilities running through here, whether it was Verizon with electric, or the water service coming down with Veolia, there was a need to clear some trees. But one of the things that we wanted to try to highlight here, and I can certainly submit some more photos here, but there are, you know, a handful of down trees, there's some trees in this area that you can see that are not in great condition, which was, you know, part of the reason that we had discussed with the town previously on doing some of this removal, so just wanted to kind of capture in there a little bit, so you could see a little bit more detail of this hill. Then the next photo in your packet here is a street view that is in winter months, so you can see here, you can actually see the building, which is nice, you'll see in the next picture, it's not so much the case, but just kind of shows you, again, the mass of trees here, and what we're attempting to replicate as best we can with our proposed plan, with just, you know, redecorating this hillside, making sure that we get good coverage, but enough so that you can still see the building pretty adequately. And then the last photo here, again, this is from the intersection, this is obviously warm weather months. The thing that we wanted to highlight here was that, you know, while this hillside was very well-covered, it was, again, going back to the balance that we've talked about, wanting to really highlight the building here, but also not expose the hillside and make sure that there's a good aesthetic here. You can't see the building when there's foliage here, I know that as you drive and you walk by, you know, you can see little pockets of it, but for the most part, the building really isn't visible, and I think part of what we're doing with the proposed plan here while restoring the hillside is also offering an opportunity for people and the residents of the community to really see this nice building.
Is the soil going to be stabilized enough? As you can see from that photo, there were quite a number of trees there that are no longer there.
Yes.
And I know we went and used, well, the armored slope, I think that was part of the justification for putting a number of those rocks up at the top near the building. If anything, you know, that lower piece is just as steep, I think, and now that you don't have trees necessarily, and you certainly have fewer trees holding the soil in place, is that going to be an issue?
Understood, and I think that was, again, with the suggestion you all had last month, one of the benefits of bringing trees down the hill a little bit is to help stabilize that. Certainly, you know, we wanted to avoid a scenario where this entire hillside becomes stone. I think that with the new planting arrangement we have, it does a good job of using the stone for stabilization while not creating just a total gray hillside here. So I think down here with the existing trees, plus the new ones that are planting, it should give us, you know, a good amount of stabilization there.
And I'd imagine that that stone that you have in the upper piece is going to, well, the color of it will change, I'm sure, as the elements go to work on it? It's not going to remain that sort of bright color indefinitely?
Yes, that is true. It's, you know, certainly over time, it'll start to resemble the rest of the hillside there. That's certainly, it's natural weathering, so yes.
But by then, we also have a more robust little forest of trees, right?
Correct, yes, and I think that was the other point that I was going to make, I think by the time the stone really weathers, you know, with these trees, they're going to be planted at about a six-foot height, some of them maybe eight to 10 feet, just depending on the species. Outside of the Green Giants, which, outside of year three, they're going to start to get about three feet per year in growth, a lot of these are going to see about a foot of growth each year, so it's going to take a handful of years for this to really come in, and I think that the trees and the rocks weathering are going to kind of happen simultaneously, so you're going to get that natural feel all at the same time, you won't have, you know, part versus the next part.
I like it. It's, yeah, I like the way you showed us this, and I think it's the springtime, and this is a rebirth, it's a rebirth of a beautiful building, and I think that's kind of what we're doing here. This was then, this was then, that's now, and I think with time, that's, you'll see the beautiful and the purpose, and it'll be repurposed for a good cause that the church has put forth, and I think it's a nice addition to the community. So we appreciate the work, and we appreciate you bringing that here, and for a father prompting the soul to go through also. But a few questions before I move on. Is there a landscape plan?
Yes, there is a landscape plan. I can bring it up if you'd like.
Yeah, can we just see it?
Yeah.
That would just get an idea, because as you said, over time, these will grow.
So this is the landscape plan here, again, a lot of the changes that we've made recently have focused on this hillside here, but consistent throughout the plan has always been some robust planting on the other side of the building, you know, for the residents, really, and then where we are expanding the driveway and the parking area for residents and for shuttle buses and other folks to come in and out, we're providing a good amount of landscaping along the top of that hill as well to help screen things as you're going around Midland Avenue there.
Which are existing trees and which are new plantings?
So existing trees, they're not going to be the easiest to see on here with all the lighting data, I can try to point a few out, and they all show up very small, like there's, you know, unfortunately, the graphics we get from the survey, this guy right here that I'm highlighting is an existing tree, there's a handful of other ones that were captured along this area. And then the existing trees that are going to hit on the main hillside here, they're all off-plan, really, they're right down along the right-of-way, they weren't captured during the survey, but there are, as you saw from the existing photos and the rendering, there are a handful down there at the base of the hill that'll remain.
Oh, there was another question I had, and maybe, could you bring that down, I just wanted to ask you about the, the, some rock. So all of the rock that's shown in this picture here, that you could see of the slope, where is that in plan? Has that always been there, or has that recently grown a little bit? That, the stabilized rock?
No, that's been, that's been consistent with when we first approached you guys back in, I think it was December, was our first appearance in front of you.
So the patio area there that's being used remains the same, and the extent of that, if you could, actually, you could just show it here, could you just take down the existing additions, so we could see the whole thing? Unclip that, just unclip the color photo.
Take the upper-left-hand corner photo away.
Yeah, cool, so we can see the whole thing. Cool. So in here, where's the terrace that they're using, like, could you show me the extent of it?
Yeah, that's over here, so you can kind of see through the trees, this retaining wall right here, the block retaining wall, there's a decorative fence up at the top, and then this, you know, pretty much the whole width or the depth of the building there is going to be a nice green space, yeah. There's a couple utility concrete pads up there for, you know, services coming in and out, a condenser, some of the electric units, but for the most part, this space over here will be a nice open green space, and it's going to extend to the rest of the campus going up the hill.
So what's on our side of the building, like, over that rock slope, is that just a slope?
Yes.
Coming from the building, just a...
That's exactly right, yes.
Do you have a plan of the whole thing? We could look at that plan, yeah, we could look at the plan you have there.
So, again, just to orient, this is the green space, sort of the terrace that's up there, and then this is the whole hillside. So again, just to orient, this is the green space, sort of the terrace that's up there. And then this is the whole hillside here. So everything, you know, has pretty much been existing as that slope. The slope even extended up into this area too, which is one of the benefits of the retaining wall here. And then we capture the tail end of the slope coming down this way. And it's all, you know, at this point, when we, when we entered the site, it was really just very overgrown in that area. Again, a lot of downed trees. There were some stones, other things like that. So, you know, at a minimum now, it's going to be much cleaner. And it'll help protect some of the, there's an existing hot box in this area, roughly the sanitary sewer line from not just this building, but also from the school, I believe, comes down the hill there. So the, the stones are going to also help protect that a little bit and save from some erosion in that area.
So the rocks that we're looking at, as you're looking up, are your side of the building? I guess whatever's not vegetated?
Exactly. It's kind of, you know, this was the view shed we were looking at here.
Right. So are occupants going to have access to that rock slope, or are they going to be?
They won't know. We have a fence. So there's a sidewalk that'll wrap around the building to a side entrance over here. There's going to be about eight to 10 feet off of the building here before we hit that slope, and that's where the decorative fence will be. The fence is going to extend all the way from the parking area along the top of the slope, and it'll continue along the top of the retaining wall until it ends on the other side, when you, there's a sidewalk and a walkway that you can access the rest of the campus with.
So no one can wander down there?
Correct, exactly.
And what material is the decorative fence?
It's a standard black aluminum. So it, you can, I don't know if you want to see the rendering again. You can kind of see it through the trees there.
Standard black aluminum kind of conveys it.
It'll have some aesthetic value. It's not a, you know, chain link fence or anything like that, but...
Yes, well done.
Looks good.
I like it. Do we have to go back to fire department? They've seen all this enough times.
They've seen this enough times, yeah.
All right. I don't have any more comments other than I like it.
Well, we really appreciate the board's feedback too. It's been a pleasure working with you, because again, this is a building everybody wants to be proud of. So we really appreciate your feedback.
It is now. And I like my idea about the new birth of the building, right? Why don't we have new landscaping?
I may steal that if you don't mind.
So this is a, this is an opening public hearing. So if there's any comments from the public, please come up now and present them, please.
Could you just put this one, just slide it down so that he can, the cameras, I guess, can pick him up?
Thank you. Stephen Yuvain, 37 Hickory Hill, Eastchester. I commend the collaboration that has brought us to this point. The rendering is beautiful. Mr. Chairman, you hit the, you nailed it. It, it is a beautiful building. And I will remind everybody, the true beauty of this building is the need it's, it's going to serve. And the beauty that's realized there is seen through the eyes of those young adults, their families, their friends. And bringing this to, to closure is, is a great thing. So thank you for all your work.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you for the comment. Any other comments? We're only taking good comments. Okay, cool. So then...
I'm good.
It's nice to get a, a positive comment. Usually people take their issues with us, or to us.
So I'm good with this. So then I make a motion to close the public hearing on this application, 2337 Arch Care.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before we approve it, I guess there's a couple of conditions. And I guess we should just talk briefly about the lighting. We'll just say that lighting to be provided, subject to review by your depart, or the building department?
Sure. So how about the applicant shall provide uplighting of the building with the lights to be placed in proximity to the base of the fence, directly towards the center of the building in an arrangement to be approved by the building inspector?
Wow, that was perfect. Yeah. There's four, right?
I think someone was paying attention before.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I'm sure any lighting would be, well, you know how to design lighting. I don't. I'll move it up to the architects.
Absolutely.
So then that's one condition. There's another condition, that it's in compliance with the plans submitted for review at this meeting. And I guess that means in conformance with that, and that it's...
Is, is there a landscape plan that includes these red buds, for example?
Yes, that was the one that was...
All right. They are on there.
Yes, they're all listed on there.
Because I know you sort of drop off at the, you, you don't get, capture the very bottom part of that.
Correct, yes. But what we did do is, there's actually a separate landscape schedule on that plan for just the hillside there. So you can see exactly what's new. And the other thing to point out as well is, if you recall the, the previous version of that plan, we actually had 12 trees that were all in that row. Now we, we've increased by more than 50%. We're at 23 right now. So we're giving a lot more coverage there.
Okay, I'm satisfied.
What's 23?
The number of trees, new trees. It was only a smaller amount.
So let me just quickly continue going through the conditions, that it's, that the second one, or maybe third one, is in, that it, that is in compliance with the conditions stated in the March 25th, 2021 resolution. I have no idea what that is, but I'm sure you do.
Sure, that's the original resolution for this application, yeah.
We're not going to go through that. That all landscaping shall be installed and maintained in compliance with the Town of Eastchester zoning laws, section 9M, which I also don't know what it is. So I'm going to turn to you and say...
Sure, it's that the planting will be installed per the specifications of the landscaping plan, and that it'll be maintained.
Got it. And that additional conditions based on our site civil comments, KSCJ, as they require. I guess we went over at the beginning that you've complied with all their comments.
Correct, yes.
So subject to those conditions, I make a motion to approve this application, 2337 Arch Care, 265 White Plains Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Yeah, that's, we, we originally approved the site plan and, over three years ago, yeah.
Good cooking takes time. Great, the next application is... Next application is 2339 122 Montgomery Avenue.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Leonard Brandis, representing Lead Corporation. We're planning on doing a new structure, a commercial building over on, at 122 Montgomery. The existing structures there were actually, I believe, removed as of today. They were in very bad condition. We now have the lot fenced in, so you can see the full lot size if you go by the space now. On March 12th, we received a rare yard area variance for the building. It does match in with the additional buildings within the area. It's all commercial areas there with repair shops and auto shops and other buildings within that that have very little setback in the rare yard. We do have enough space in the rare yard to maintain the building. The building itself, it's for the site, the building plan. We've had some changes and requests for changes to indicate the parking facilities that we have. What we do have, this is the existing site plan. We are going to have two vehicles on the outside, two on the inside. We do have a loading dock, a 15-area loading dock over here. The facility is not planned to be used actually as a storage, storage building. It's not a cube in or, you know, cube space. This is for holding basically trucks and vehicles and equipment that the owners of the property are using in their daily work. So this is not going to be getting deliveries all the time or anything like that. This is to maintain their equipment and keep the things in there. We did create a landscape plan to show that we do want to enclose the space. We will have grass wrapping around, and we have trees and shrubs, as noted on the landscape plan that you have, all specified, so we can have a little bit of closure on there. We do want to have fencing across the front yard over here. There's enough rooms, 20 feet here, so we can put cars in here in front. But we do want to close that in with a black chain link fence, which will have slats, which are very similar to the buildings further down the block. You have a list of photographs that show all these other buildings. And the building itself, just to give you an idea, this is to the left of the building. This is the building itself that's here. This is actually the property going through here in the middle of this driveway. So that car will be out of the way. This is the building itself and the new, the other building over here. Now, the Brook Building over here actually does use some parking on the side of this building. We'll go back to the site plan for a minute. But before I do that, I just wanted to mention that we did this building for a lead over on Marble Dale Road, and we're doing a similar type of building is what we're doing here. So it's going to be the same materials. I have samples of the color to show you. And just so you get a better idea of what the building itself will be like. Right, the parking on the side we were talking about, that does come from Brook. And that's one of the reasons why they bought this property, because they've been renting space over here all this time. So now they own the property, so all the parking still comes into this area. We're not losing any parking there. And we're able to have a building that does maintain all their equipment that needs it for that building. Let's look at the elevations. I said, the building itself is very similar to the one that we did in the other photograph. I thought that was better than any sort of rendering, since it's basically matching the same materials and same company. Test these for the colors. The colors that we have for it. And, and I'm up for questions.
Is the, how far is the loading dock from the curb? It wasn't very...
This, well, the curb itself, we have a 20-foot front yard setback, but there's about 18 feet in front of that, actually. It's a very large front area on the property. It's not the usual setbacks. Usually you have 10 feet. But we have a lot more than 10 feet over here in the front of the building itself to the roadway.
Is that the town right-of-way?
Excuse me?
Is that the town right-of-way that, that area?
It's a town right-of-way, yes.
Okay, it's just a...
There's a town right-of-way, and there's actually a parking space over here that they have set up. It's about 14 feet deep over there. So that is parking. We, we are not disturbing that parking area. We want to maintain that. And that's one of the reasons why we kept everything to the sides, or to the side over here as well.
So any use of the...
To maintain that parking space. We're not losing any parking on the lot, on the roadway.
So all the usage of that dock is inward of the...
We don't really plan on using the dock, but because it's technically a warehouse building, we need to have some sort of loading area in case we do have trucks coming in, or if it, it comes to another owner, that it can be still used as a warehouse-type building. That's why we have the loading area, which the truck would go into the building itself. As you notice, the doors are very high on that. We have 14-foot doors, so any tractor-trailer, if there is going to be, can back up into a loading dock inside the building. The required loading docks by the code is, I believe, is 15 by 40. So we will be certainly able to handle that.
Could you just kindly remind me the hours that this is, facility's going to be open?
I'm going to bring Mr. Semenera here to join us.
Mike Semenera, Lead. Really, our hours of operation are, my guys start around 7, 8 o'clock, and we're done by 4:00, unless there's an emergency. If there's a snow emergency, we need to get the stuff out of the warehouse, but we're usually done by 4:00. We don't really plan on using this constantly. Mostly, our, our others, our other place on Marble Dale Road, they go in. We take our supplies for the day. It's very rare that we go in and out of there daily. You know, like if we're doing an apartment or something like that, we'll go in, we'll take our, our materials out of there. They won't go back in for a couple of days. That's usually how we operate our stuff. Not to say that we might need to go in there. If there's a snow emergency, we need to get the plows on our equipment or something like that, but we don't plan on that. That's not, that's not our intent. Also, we're well aware of the, the neighbors, and we have, you know, residential across the street, so...
Yeah.
And we're also, we're also looking to clean up the area. So we own the building next door, so it's in our best interest to maintain the block.
Understood, yeah. My concerns behind that remark is just more or less, like you said, there is a residential area kind of adjacent to that street, whereas on Marble Dale, it is, at least from my perception, a little bit more industrial in those surrounding areas. And like you said, in that type of industry where there's trucking, tractor-trailers, materials, I'm familiar with it myself. You know, like you said, you start early, 7:00, you're on your second breakfast, right? But the rest of the world, kids going to school, things like that, just noise and just being kind to the neighbors is more or less my concern.
100%. We're not looking to do that. Also, like I said to you before, we're not, we're, my guys are the same way. We don't really start that early anyway. By the time they're done getting their coffee and stuff like that, it's later. And we're not, our intent right now is not to use that on a daily basis anyway. Even when we were taking down the property, we didn't start until 8:00 this morning. You know, we're not looking to get anybody upset.
Understood. Thank you for the clarification.
So someone said a nasty word about a chain link fence with slats on it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, that is really what's down the whole block and all the other commercial spaces. We do want to have it closed in. We don't want people going in and out of the property, obviously. And we don't necessarily want it as visible.
This has to go to ARB, that's the idea?
Yep.
So the problem we're having even across the street is a lot of the kids are going, they're skateboarding, they're destroying all our brand-new curbing and stuff like that. Same thing on Marble Dale Road. We came, people started, there's a hotel across the street. They started parking overnight. We get there in the morning, we don't know whose car it is. There's residential across the street. So really, it's more for security than it is anything else. So we usually like now to close it off. This way, people aren't parking, especially with, you know, you've got all the spots there that the town owns. People just start parking thinking they can park on our properties. It's been, it's been an ongoing battle over there. So our, our intent was to just block it off. We close it in the mornings. Sometimes it stays closed for weeks, days. If we're not using the property, that's really what it's for. I tried to think of how we could buffer that a little bit, because it is a fence, but it's going to be a brand-new chain link fence. Down the street is a lot worse than we're going to look like. I, I don't know how else to really protect it so people aren't going on there on a daily basis or using the property and parking there. So that's kind of why we thought of doing that. I don't know how else we could really soften that.
We're providing landscape trees on the corners as well. We're not just creating just a, a block of, the whole, across the whole property that we do have. It's, it's limited. It's only where the entry is to the driveway itself.
Yeah, do you have renderings? Or, yeah, can we see that? And I think there's elevation.
We are bringing the trees around through here also, all through here. So we have taller trees to, you know, block the building, terms of that, and create a scene over here.
So the extent of the fence is just where there's pavement?
Just in the front of the building where the parking, just for the parking area itself, for the driveway.
I think I saw a rendering of what the building's going to look like. It might not have been this building, but it was something similar? Was that part of the package?
That, was that the Marble Dale one?
Is there an elevation or something of what it's going to look like?
No.
We must...
Yeah, we just showed the photograph of the other building that we have.
Yeah, let's see that. Do you have that?
Bring that building back up here.
Oh, that's Marble Dale.
That's the Marble Dale Road one.
So we're doing, you're doing the same?
Yes, basically the same building.
The color palette's the same?
The color will be the same, yes. Look, right there.
Oh, sorry.
We have, you know, we have a stack of stone going up to the sides, and then we have the prefab unit going on top of that.
Just, where's all the equipment for the inside in the back, as far as the HVAC and all that kind of stuff?
We have that actually, let's go back to the plan for a second. Let's see the plan. We have a floor planist. So as we're in the building itself, we do have a utility room in the back of the building over here, and we have a handy, half-accessible bathroom over here. There is a balcony, as you can see, up here, sorry, a mezzanine area for storage that we have. That's part of the way through the building. It's about a third of the way through, but not the whole building itself. But we are keeping all the utilities in the back of the building itself.
So... What are we doing? We're going to review, send this to Architectural Review Board?
Sure, to open the public hearing in the first instance and then send to the Architectural Review Board.
So before we do that, I'm still sort of searching for some way to ask if there's anything you could do for the fence that's a little prettier than a chain link fence with...
I'm sorry.
So before we do that, I'm going to ask if you can come up with some idea to make the fence, although I understand there's other places with the same fence. Maybe here we could do something a little more attractive than a, than a chain link fence.
We can do something. I can use, I mean, I mean, I know you don't like the slot. I mean, just a chain link fence is what most people are using. I mean, we can use an aluminum fence, but I think that's, I don't know. We're just concerned about kids climbing over things and getting in there.
What's the, what's the height of the fence going to be that you're proposing? It's more than four feet?
Six-foot-high fence is what they have.
So the fence is just gonna go across the front of the property, and then the trees are gonna surround the rest of the...
Cover the rest, yes.
Because otherwise, if you just have the fence, kids will go around it. If the, if the goal was to keep people out...
We are putting a fence around the back, there is a, on the site plan, I believe?
You just showed them the one that's... You just showed them the one of the other property that we have? I think the...
Noel?
Oh, it's a six?
We can see the fence.
Well, I'm gonna show it.
Yeah, so, you can see the fence on that one that we have here.
So we have the fencing here, and then...
Is permitted in this district.
There's a buffer, right? So, my guys, we go and we close this at night, but then there's the landscaping here, so it's gonna buffer the fencing. The only place that you're really gonna see the fencing is where the opening of the driveway is. That's really the only intent. The rest of it, the landscaping, we'll cover that area, because we're gonna put the fence before the landscaping. So, all the landscaping, the grass and all that stuff, it's just to close in the property, really. Same thing with the right and left. We don't want, you know, we don't want, we have to do something between the driveway of Brook Street Lot and us, so we're just looking to box it in. But the intent of the front gate is only to block the area where the driveway parking area would be, the concrete.
Right, but that's almost the whole width of the lot, isn't it? If you go back to the site plan, that's almost the whole width of the lot, isn't it?
It's...
Well, that's what's there now, we just took the fence now. There was a lot, the lot next door had a fence all the way across it. So where the block is now, we're just gonna...
It's that, right?
It's about, it's actually about half of the lot itself, it's about half of the lot.
How many feet is that?
We are bringing, well, actually, because the lot's all the way out to here.
Right, how many feet is...
So we're closing this area, and this is already closed in, so we're just closing this section here, but this is just that section of the lot itself.
How much is that, that you just indicated with your fingers?
Over here?
Yep.
This was where we were at?
Eight, 10, 12, 15?
It's what, 30?
30.
30 feet.
Again, the purpose of enclosing that is at least twofold. One is to prevent people from parking there.
Yes.
But preventing people from parking there can be done by other means as well. I think you can put stanchions in or something, removable ones, but you also want to keep people from intru, yeah, intruding on the property, and that...
We understand that, we're trying to, you know, in time, right, and everything gets attrition, we will move down the block, right, in life, but it's an industrial area, so we still have a lot of guys that get in there 6:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, wherever they're doing, on the other side, down the street, so just want to prevent the guys from wandering into our area. We just want to make sure it's safe, and plus the kids, really, to be honest with you. I don't want anybody going there and go around the whole, and somebody gets hurt. That's really what it's about. Same thing here, right? We have a fence across here where the auto repair shops are, so those auto repair shops, it's the same thing, they block their area in at night, so it's just, that's all it's about, you know?
Okay.
It's six, right?
It's eight, and it has to be 10 feet from the front lot line. Is it setback 10 feet from the front lot line?
The fence itself?
Correct.
Would be at the front lot line, in this case.
We'll meet the code, so...
Whatever the code requires, we will put the fence back, if we need to go back 10 feet, we will put the fence back there.
But is there, is there 10 feet available?
Yes.
Oh, the, where's lot line? Lot line is my...
10 feet would be, the setback right here is 10 foot, so right here, so it'd be right across here.
The other reason why, we, just so design purposes, when we designed the building, we pushed the building this way and got a variance, this way we gave it more of a nicer look for the block, because we could've came forward with the part, with the building, and not needed a back variance, but the design was, you know what, let's try to make the whole, from the corner of Brook Street down, look pretty, not Brook Street, I'm sorry, Montgomery. So, we pushed the building back and got the backyard variance, even though there was a garage here as well, was because we want to put some landscaping here and make it pretty.
No, I appreciate that.
So that's really where we're going with that. So just, that's why we have a lot more room here in the front.
So, just one more question, and we'll move on. You showed, you put the picture of Marbledale?
Yes.
Did you put that back up? Do you have a fence there, similar to what...
Yes, we do.
Can we see that, again? Like, it was green on...
We have the exact fencing that we're looking at.
Yeah, I'm just like...
Maybe actually, would be useful if I just bring it up.
Yeah.
For the public also, we should put it on camera.
Yeah, but before, before he goes, let's just take a quick look.
Is the fence is actually open in this photograph? It's just the gate.
Yeah, it's a double gate.
It'll be open when they're taking things in and out, it's not gonna be...
It's a double gate, it has two, a middle point that could break out into two.
So it's black? That shows...
Is that black or brown?
That's black, exact same fence, black with the slats.
Yeah, maybe...
Keep privacy, too.
Maybe when you go to ARB, you show them what it's gonna look like, because I'm pretty sure they're gonna ask the same questions, and if they're okay with it, maybe we'll be okay with it? Right? I mean, if you show us something that we're gonna say, yeah, that's okay. Right now, we're sort of nondescript to me.
Yeah, and even if we have to put a little bit more landscaping, hire landscaping to buffer the other area, other wood has to be done. It's just that one area where it needs to be open and closed a lot, I can't have any landscaping.
Yeah, the ARB usually has some pretty good ideas on how to gussy it up.
Any questions for me?
No, that's fine, thank you. And we clarified the issue about the turf, right? It's grass?
Yes.
Yes, that is grass, yes, we changed that on the site plan that you have now.
Great, thank you.
That was the landscape architect, and it's shocking that he put it that way.
That was another job. All right, cool. So, we're going to, stand by, we're gonna see if the public has any comments. So, I make a motion to open the public hearing, application 2339-122 Montgomery Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Being that there's no comments, unless we have any comments up here, I'm going to refer this to Architectural Review Board. We're good? Good, so I may make a motion to refer this application, 2339-122 Montgomery, to Architectural Review Board, and this public hearing will remain open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public open?
Yes.
Yes, stays open. So, we're done for today.
Okay.
We'll see you soon.
Thank you very much, very much.
Yes, have a nice evening. Let's see, next application is 600 White Plains Road, 2332...
Give back the samples.
You have this?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Great.
Yes, you too.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Munna, Civil and Structural Engineer, and I'm attached to Shawnee Valley in this application. So our application is to propose a new canopy at the existing gas station, which is just two gasoline dispensers that have no structure or roof structure above it, we're proposing to add a structure that's about 19 feet in height. We were recently, we recently received approval from the zoning board to full variances for the height of the structure, which is not permitted.
Yeah, could you, excuse me, could you speak up a little bit? A little bit?
Is the mic working correctly? Is, yeah.
Hello?
Oh, good.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so just to repeat it, we're proposing a new gas station canopy structure on the existing gas station that has no roof structure above it. We recently received zoning board approval for the variance for the gas station canopy structure to be 19 feet in height, we're only permitted to have 12 feet at the front yard. We also received variance to construct an accessory structure at the front yard, which is also not permitted in a residential zone, and just to have an elevation of the gas station That's the structure, this is a convenience store, and as you can see, the gas station canopy structure is just right above where the dispensers are, and it's 19 feet in height. That's, it's essentially what we're proposing for this project.
Okay, so the variances that were granted were for the height and for just the structure itself?
Yeah, and the location of the structure, we're not permitted, yeah, you're not permitted an accessory structure in the front yard.
It was pretty uncontroversial, I think.
I'm sorry, the structure's not permitted with...
It's a residential zone, and they do not permit accessory structures in the front yard of the property, within the front yard. So, yeah, we're within the front yard buffer, I think 30 feet is the permitted front yard, and we are within that 30 feet from the front to the building.
So are the pumps 30 feet back from, from...
No.
There are only four pumps, right?
Two pumps.
Well, two, well, yeah.
Yeah, four, yeah. So the pumps are within the 30 feet as well, so this line right here is, the blue line is where the required yard requirements are. So the building is about 64 feet, and then we can see the dispensers are about within 25 feet.
Is it a fire suppression system in the canopy?
Yeah, there's a, yeah.
Oh, there is? There is because it's required, or because you're putting a canopy up?
As I recall, when this application was before you previously, either the regulation changed, they're not required to have one, but they can, I believe. There's no more requirement to have an overhead with fire suppression in it.
Yeah, we had that in Chester Heights, I think, too, like, we had that same issue come up, yeah.
So this is more for convenience for customers than fire suppression?
But there is fire suppression, right?
There is, there is, so they do have...
But you're not putting up the canopy, is the canopy putting up to administer fire suppression that's not required, or to keep the people from getting soaked when it's raining?
It's a side improvement, it's part of just improving the side and the, I mean, you can say it's for the customers, because when you're pumping gas and it's raining, and it's just more, you know, it's convenient for the customers, if you want to put it that way. But also, it does have a bigger purpose of fire prevention.
So, my opinion is, I'd rather not have the canopy and just let the people get wet, because it's just a huge, it's a huge structure that we're putting on the street, and I, you know, is there any way we can make it smaller, or...
I was gonna ask about the size as well, so what was the difference with going from 12 to 19 feet? The variance to go, to go an additional seven feet higher?
So, it's 19, it's actually, oh, let me just clarify. So, the clear height from the bottom to the, the bottom of the ceiling is 16 feet, but to the top of the ridge is 19 feet. The 16 feet is the standard height for delivery trucks and the gasoline trucks that will be able to maneuver around that location.
That's why it needs to be that high, because trucks come under it? Got it.
And how, how wide is it?
15 feet.
15 feet. So just, because there are only the two sets of pumps, it doesn't have to be that long?
Yeah. Is there a plan showing the footprint of that canopy?
Yeah.
Can we see that, please?
It's 25 feet long, 15 feet wide.
That's the canopy. Do you have a site plan that shows the canopy?
Yep. It's right here, the hatched-out section, 25 feet by 15.
Oh, so it's, as you said, it's relative to the site, it's small, if you just focus on that, it's big, yeah.
Is there gonna be any signage on the canopy, or as far as...
Sorry, I didn't hear.
Signage? Are you gonna have any, is there any signage being proposed on the canopy, or is it gonna just be one white color?
There hasn't been a mention of providing signage from the owner, but I can clarify that.
Canopy signage is not permitted by the town sign law.
Okay, great.
So the answer's no.
Thank you.
I know the other stations in town have canopies, but this one in particular has residential across the street from it, and the high school next to it, so, in my opinion, a little bit more of an eyesore than the ones down Post Road, which are in the more commercial area, Walgreens is across the street. It's my opinion on that, but...
Yeah, I think it's, well, we'll hear if there are any members of the public who have an opinion on this, but it looks like it's of a pretty modest size, particularly relative to the property itself, and I think we got a good explanation as to why it's, the height is. You know, I don't have an issue with it.
Just to add more clarification, it's about three feet shorter than the main structure. This line right here is where the main building is behind it, the convenience store, and the canopy structure is just about three feet shorter, so it's not like overwhelmingly...
Right. What's the materials? What's it gonna, it's gonna be metal panel, or...
Metal, yeah, metal and then shingle roof on it, but it's metal, steel beams and...
Yeah, what color are the, what color and all the rest of that, is it all going to be? The shingle colors and the canopy?
We can say charcoal gray for the shingles, and then the canopy, if you guys have a preference, we can try to match the color of the, any color to coordinate with the convenience store, maybe the trims of the doors or something, just to have some sort of coordination.
Okay, so I think we're gonna leave it up to the Architectural Review Board to opine on the, on the aesthetics.
I agree.
And then we'll see what they say, and...
Can I just, for the Architectural Review Board, they'll want to know the color and the make and material of the shingles, and to bring color samples and material boards, if you have it.
Yes, ma'am.
Because what I'm hoping is we could do something to make it look less obtrusive using certain finishes and colors.
Okay.
I noted there's existing fire suppression and lights, are they just gonna build it into the canopy and remove the existing fire suppression and lights that are there?
Wait, could you say that again?
There's, currently, there's a fire suppression system and lights above the pumps, are they just gonna build it into the canopy and remove the existing one? Is that the plan?
There is...
Is it going to be a replacement of what's there?
There's no, there's no structure right now.
Right now, you have a fire suppression system and lights above it, right?
Oh, oh, that's, that's gonna be inbuilt to the structure.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, yeah, it's built into the, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So let's open the public hearing. So, I make, any more comments, guys?
No.
Good. I make a motion to open the public hearing on this application, 2332-600 White Plains Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any comments? No? So, I don't have any more comments, I'm ready to ask the ARB to take a pass at this, so I make a motion to refer this application, 2332-600 White Plains Road, to the Architectural Review Board, and this public hearing will remain open.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and remember to bring those materials and have a better sense of what colors you're proposing. The ARB may have some other recommendations for you, but it's always a good idea to have that all set up first, and have the materials with you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. Next application is forty-seven Inter Laken, application twenty-four oh-six.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Barbuti, architect, representing the Vranish residence, here tonight seeking approval. Last month, we received ARB approval on the proposed addition. It's basically a sixteen by twenty-seven, second floor master bedroom dormer addition. There'll be some facade alterations, reducing some of the brick that's in the front, new vinyl siding, new roof material, small roof over the garage door. That's pretty much it.
Okay, and when the ARB took a look at this, my notes reflect here that they had comments about making sure that the roofing was uniform.
So, we were originally gonna try to weave it in. One of the comments of the ARB was this entire front roof section would be re-roofed. No issue with that.
Good.
And I think that's been modified on the plans that were submitted.
Yeah. And were there any other recommendations made by the ARB? Yeah, that's all my notes reflected.
I've got samples of materials if you'd like to see.
Sure.
Basically, double four vinyl siding in white, white AZAC trim. All the windows are gonna be replaced with white Anderson windows. And. Weathered wood.
Upper left-hand corner there?
Yep. Asphalt shingles to match existing.
That vinyl's the one that's above the garage at the moment?
So I think above the garage right now is tan. It's gonna be, they wanna do the whole house in white.
Oh, understood. So no more brick on the?
So they're gonna drop the brick. I'm gonna keep basically a water table, bring it down about four feet above the grade in the front. The stone on the right-hand side is gonna remain, and the massive brick along the left-hand side is gonna be reduced as well.
Thank you.
It's pretty straightforward. Yeah, okay. Let's see. I don't have any more comments. So, let's just see if the public does. So I make a motion to open the public hearing on application twenty-four oh-six, forty-seven Inter Laken.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing on the same application, twenty-four oh-six, forty-seven Inter Laken.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, I don't think we have any more comments. So I'm just going to, I've got one condition that I have to put into the record here. Oh, there's no landscaping changes or anything like that? Okay. Is there any HVAC stuff, or existing is adequate for the addition?
They've sized everything previously at all.
Oh, really? Good. So then, the, I'm gonna make a motion that the addition, the condition is that the addition is constructing compliance with the plans submitted here, and that the materials existing and new portions of the roof are consistent in color and quality to prevent an appearance that the roof is patched. That's obvious. Okay, cool. So I make a motion to approve this application, twenty-four oh-six, forty-seven Inter Laken, subject to the conditions I just stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Take your stuff. The next application is application seven, twenty-four oh-seven, fourteen Shady Lane.
Good evening. Sitz Schlohman, architect, on behalf of the owners, fourteen Shady Lane. It's existing one-and-a-half-story house with a partial second floor. The proposed project is to take off the second floor and construct a full second floor, as well as an addition in the rear of the house on one story pushing out in the rear, and a small patio. The front of the house, garage door, front door, bay window will stay as is, and the second floor will be all new. Proposed arctic white siding and black windows and a charcoal gray roof. We have a rendering here of the proposed house. We went to the Architectural Review Board. A few comments from the board were to maintain, to carry this shed roof all the way across and create a front portico with columns, which we've incorporated. We had these windows closer together. We moved them apart. This black pergola structure over the garage door, as well as the light fixtures, they felt the ones we originally proposed were too small, so we kind of beefed them up a little bit. So those were the main comments from the ARB, and we've incorporated them. They were well-received. And that's kind of the whole presentation of the house.
How does the scale of this building compare to the adjacent?
Actually, I don't have the photos here, but there are photos of other houses. There are a lot of two-story houses on the street and in the neighborhood, full two stories, so not too dissimilar.
Well, this is actually getting a little closer to three stories in the front there. The dormers up front.
And that was the other comment, for the dormers to be pushed back a little bit. We had them kind of closer, so we set them back on the roof a bit to show more roof shingle.
So, did the ARB have comments?
Those were all their comments.
Yeah, what we went through right now.
Yeah, so we've incorporated all their comments.
They didn't have any comments about the size of the windows on the second floor?
No.
Kind of small.
Small?
Yeah, they do. I mean, I kinda think.
But if you made them bigger, they'd be disproportionate to the first floor.
I mean, the width of them is kind of conducive to the interior flow. If there's a bed against the wall, that sort of thing, closets.
If you wall.
So, yeah.
I think the ARB spent quite a bit of time on those windows.
They did. They had their own sketches.
Yeah, yeah. So I think they did handle that pretty, because I was privy to the original.
Yeah, and the changes were all improvements, yeah.
This is much improved from that.
Yeah, that was inaccurate. I attended the Architectural Review Board meeting, and that was an accurate summary of the comments that the members of the Architectural Review Board had, and they seemed to be all picked up. As long as you agree that the pergola with the garage door and the lights are appropriate for their setting.
That's the best you could do. No, it's actually pretty handsome.
Yeah, no, and it's, it is much improved with the, with the implementation of the recommendations. It's a very nice home to begin with.
Were there any, were there any comments from either the boards as far as the dormers at the top?
Um, just that, to move them back like we did, they were closer to the roof line, to the gutter. So we pushed them back so that there's more exposed shingles in front of them.
Got it. Thanks.
What is the overall height change with the addition?
The height change, I mean, it's still within zoning right now. I don't have the photo here of the existing house, but we are, oh, what do we have here? The total building height, we're going up about two foot nine taller than the existing in total.
Oh, that's it? You're just going up, like?
Yeah, from the, the ridge, the max twenty-eight, nine, yeah, two, almost three feet in total height.
I think it's the dormers that make it seem, it throws it off, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Looks good.
Sounds good.
Nice upgrade.
So, just stand by. We have to open the public hearing. So, motion to open the public hearing on this application, twenty-four oh-seven, fourteen Shady Lane.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Coming once. Close the public hearing on application twenty-four oh-seven, fourteen Shady Lane.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Conditions? I don't have any conditions. That's not this application. Cool. So I make a motion to approve application twenty-four oh-seven, fourteen Shady Lane.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Right, then, next and final application is twenty-three thirty-two four nine White Main Street and twenty-seven New Street. So, just for the folks that are here, this is, um.
You don't forget to take your.
Yeah, so for the folks that are here, this is a preliminary, just a review. They're just presenting, there's nothing that's being voted on. We're just seeing what they have. We understand, we've seen this before. They're just putting in front of us what they're proposing now, and then we're all gonna think about it. So, it's an opportunity to see what's proposed, and obviously, if there's comments, that's a good time to bring them up.
We will have a public hearing.
Yes, we are. Uh, yes. Yep. But this is, you know, the first step, so there's nothing that's gonna be decided tonight. It's just, we get to hear from you again, what you guys are up to.
May I start?
Yes, of course.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Smith, Principal of Planning and Development Advisors, here on behalf of Angelo Angovino.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I think it's off.
Mic's off.
Why does the mic keep going off?
Maybe people turn it off when they finish.
I don't know.
All right, okay.
There we go. There we go. Let me start over. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public. For the record, David Smith, Principal of Planning and Development Advisors. Planning and Development Advisors on behalf, here on behalf of Angelo Angovino and East Chester Manor developers. As you had indicated, we're here for kind of, again, an application or presentation on the proposed project, two forty-nine Main Street, twenty-seven New Street. As the board may recall, back in June of 2020, you had approved a site plan for this site. Was slightly different. It included fifteen units and a four-story building. In the interim, Mr. Angovino has purchased an additional piece of property, twenty-seven New Street, and with that, he's reconfigured the site plan, so that it now includes a proposed six-story building with twenty-five units, fifteen one-bedroom units, and ten two-bedroom units, supported by thirty-six parking spaces, in both covered and service configurations. And I'll just quickly, have the plan here. Yeah, so here's New Street, Main Street. The way that the circulation is proposed, there is a one-way-in off of Main Street, circulating around the site, and one-way-out to Main Street, and there is a one-way-in off of New Street. And there's parking on the New Street lot. As part of the proposed action, there are a series of variances that are requested. We've appeared before the Zoning Board of Appeals back in January to get some initial input from them. The variances include maximum height, four stories is the, is what the zoning requires. We're requesting six stories. Building height required, building height is forty-five feet, we're requesting sixty-seven. In the application materials that we had submitted to your board and to the town, we've included an exhibit, I believe it's exhibit number four, which indicates that there are a number of buildings within this general area that exceed a four stories in height, they're five or six stories, residential buildings. So we think that that is a, that certainly there are other examples of this scale of development within this particular neighborhood. The, since the submission or the presentation before the zoning board, your board has initiated the SECA requirement, that's the State Environmental Quality Review Act, where you've requested the notice of intent to act as lead agency. It's my understanding that you had became lead agency at your February meeting, and now we were in a process of a determination of significance under SECA, where you're evaluating all the environmental impacts of the proposed action. And with that, we have included several technical studies. We included a traffic report. Our traffic engineer, Mr. Dempsey, is not here tonight, and I understand that New York Traffic, New York Engineering Consultants are here. But we are in receipt of technical memos from both, and we would like to have an opportunity to review those and respond to those for the next meeting. In addition, we prepared, excuse me, a schools report, which evaluated the potential impacts of this potential project on the, on the East Chester School District. And based on my experience with these types of projects, multifamily developments, residential developments with one- and two-bedroom building configurations, they typically generate very little in the way of school-age kids, public school-age children. So we've included that as part of the analysis. In addition, we had prepared a, an economic report at the request of the planning director. And essentially, one of the benefits of this type of development that we would request that you at least consider, is that this type of development brings in households that are within walking distance of goods and services along Main Street in this part of town. Each household brings with it disposable income, and some portion of that, and we've estimated that approx, on an annual basis, that the project, that households within this project would spend approximately 1.2 million on goods and services. Excuse me, not necessarily within, entirely within West, in East Chester, but within the East Chester community. In addition, there are, there would be an increase in tax revenue, of a projected tax revenue of approximately 128,000. There are construction-related jobs as a result of this, with approximately 2.9 million dollars in annual wages for the construction of the project, which we think are important. My apologies, it's the allergy season. And lastly, there was a, during the course of the review, the East Chester Fire Department had initially requested that the site plan remove six spaces so that a piece of apparatus could be located on the property in the event that there was a, an event. And based on discussions with the Fire Department, the applicant, Mr. Angovino, has decided to modify the building code construction, and I think our architect is here, Mr. Freida, who will go through that in more detail. So that, that essentially allows for the inclusion of those spaces that would have to have been removed. So we're still at the thirty-six spaces that are being requested. And that, again, that's one of the variances that are being requested on behalf of the applicant. So, Mr. Chairman, that kind of goes through some of the initial site plan and planning analysis that's been prepared. I'll ask Mr. Freida to go through the architect. Yes, sir.
Sure.
Yeah.
Before he does, I have a couple of questions. The economic review that was part of the package, who requested that?
Say that again.
The economic review, that part of the package that you submitted and you spoke of just now, who was that requested by?
That, at the time, it was by Mr. Herbert, who was the planning director for the town of East Chester.
Oh, he did? Okay.
Yes.
Got it. No other comments. Oh, and I just wanted to, so the review of the school capacity or generation was by a private consultant who has experience doing this, I think, right?
The school report was prepared by my office, by me?
By your office, right?
Correct.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and there are two members of this board who approved the prior application, and it's the chairman and myself. And can you refresh, from my recollection, what the configuration, the number of units in the application that we approved were relative to this one? This one has twenty-five units, right? It's got, is it twenty-five?
The initial approval was for fifteen. The initial approval was for fifteen.
Fifteen, okay. And, and so it's consistent...
Now we're up to twenty-five.
Yeah, it, it's because there's a, there's a ground floor, and then there are five floors here, is it, that have, that would have occupancy? Is that how it works?
Is that... Like the architect.
Okay.
I'm Antonio Freida. So we have six stories right now. The, the lowest level is basically under, under, it's parking with a lobby, and a, a meeting room as well. And we have a cellar. And then above that, under the proposal is five stories.
Yes, each with five units, right? Yeah. Each with three...
Five, five units.
I'm sorry, three one-story and two...
So two...
Three, three one, one bedroom and two...
Correct.
Two bedroom, okay.
So, in the previous application, we had three stories. Now we have five. And each, the configuration and the plan is exactly the same. It's just that it's multiplied.
And again, the, the, I, I think I asked this when you revisited us most recently. The rationale behind this request for a, a significantly taller building is because of the, uh, the way I heard it, or the way I recall it, is because of the, it's mostly driven by the electrical? And, and the...
Correct.
The, the cost of that is making it, uh, show economically, um...
Wouldn't have been feasible. Right, so it wouldn't have been feasible to spend, uh, I don't know what it was, half a million dollars in order to remove the electrical poles that are in front of Main Street? And, and to build only fifteen units on top? So, um, to make, to propose more units, we, the, the lot behind this property was available. Mr. Agavino bought it, and now is proposing to add two more levels, since now we have much more parking than before. And the previous application of fifteen parking, of fifteen apartments, we had the required number of parking spaces. In this particular application, we're short, I believe, seven parking spaces, yeah. So, need a variance for that. But it, it, the fire department allows us to keep six units, which otherwise it would have taken from us in order to, to park the vehicles and bring their ladders and from, from the, from the back of the building. And, uh, in lieu of that, um, uh, requested that we have sprinklers, stand pipes, fire alarm, and that the building be combustible type one, one A or one B, whichever way we go. So, so instead of being a wood frame structure above a concrete base, which would be, the first floor would be a hundred percent concrete and steel, and then above that would have been wood, and in the four, four-story configuration, now they say, well, you don't have to remove the poles in the front, and you don't have to give us any, any space in the back for our trucks, as long as you change it to a non-combustible building, whether you do four stories or six stories. Yeah, and it'll still have space to come in anyway, yeah.
Okay.
So don't they still need access? I mean, it's about access to the building.
I'm sorry.
Don't they, the fire department still needs access, whether it's combustible, non-combustible? What, what change that they...
What changes is, is the fact that it's now non-combustible versus combustibles. They would have needed the ladder to come in.
Oh, so now the equipment they're using is different? I mean, this is more a fire department question than a...
This is what the fire department...
Yeah, yeah. I'm just trying. Yeah, sure, please.
How you doing? Uh, my name is Angela Agavino. I'm the owner and, and developer, hopefully.
Sure.
So, um, after meeting with the fire department, our proposed spot was, um, to be here, so we're gonna remove these six spaces. They were gonna turn the truck and come into here. But after doing diagrams and showing them different angles and how they would be able to access this, these portions of that, of the building, their, their fire access is gonna be here. And before, we wouldn't have that access because the fire truck wouldn't, can't turn around. So what they would do is now, it wasn't on the table before, New Street. So now, the reason is that we don't have to remove the lines, and we don't have to remove the spaces, is because their ladder comes from the back of the building on New Street and comes in here, and would exit the building this way. And they would have fire access, they would set up their apparatus here, which they have plenty of room, and they could hit here and here, but they, the way the code reads, if you have a wood structure building, it has to be within a certain amount of distance from, a parallel of a side, if you have a wood structure building. But if, if we go into the type one A and one B, which is all masonry, then they're able to have fire access here. So they're gonna set up their apparatus here, they'll be able to get all, all three corners theoretically. God forbid there's a fire, but also, it's not required to do stand pipe and sprinklers, which I told them that I will also do. And that was, um...
Thank you. That explains it. So what is it now? It's masonry and plank, or...
Um, we're proposing to do, um, it's steel and masonry. So it's no, no more combustible material, no wood in the building, so it's gonna be all poured and steel.
Well, as far as, as far as the construction, whatever the code allows, and there are certain, there's limitations to wood, but they allow some wood, um, in the roof structure. You couldn't actually have wood at the roof level because it's, you know, at that point, there's nothing above that except open air. And so, the code does allow it. Not that we're planning to do it, but just in case, that's something that is on the table. You know, but basically, the first level will be steel, concrete, and then it, I don't think we're gonna go with masonry all the way up on the exterior, but, you know, it, it will be maybe a light gauge metal system, you know, protected with, uh, with the gypsum system, exterior and interior. And then the interior core system, the, where the elevator and the stairs are, and the, and the central hallway, will be all masonry and, and cement. So, uh, that's it.
Thank you. So, right, this has a number of steps to go through, and obviously, the one that is the most obvious is the massing of the building. And although you've said there's other buildings with similar massing, it's still, it's a big piece of structure that we're putting up. So, I mean, that's, I think that's gonna be everyone's concern, among others, among the parking and the circulation and traffic and everything else. So, it's not a, it's not a simple, a simple application to review. So, this has to go to zoning once we're okay, right? So we have to go through this until we're okay. It's not going anywhere.
Correct. Uh, this is a coordinated review under S E C R, so you have to go through the entire S E C R process and make your determination of significance before you can refer it there.
If we can't make negative declaration, we figure out what to do next.
Correct.
And, and we're gonna need the, um, our consultants to weigh in on certain of these issues.
Yes, so, um, both, um, the town's consulting traffic engineer and the town's consulting civil engineer have reviewed this application, and they both issued fairly lengthy comment memoranda. And so the applicant has that guidance to work from to revise plans.
Yep. I heard Mr. Smith say that earlier, that, that...
Yes.
Your homework assignment.
Yeah, so I don't think we're going to provide much direction right now. I mean, as you said, this is preliminary review. We're gonna tell you what we think. We have to figure it out. We have to listen to the public. We have to figure out what issues we want to address first. So, we just want to understand what it is proposing, and then sort of take time to figure out what, what has to be addressed next. But preliminary review, preliminary comments, you heard them. They're the same comments that you'd expect. It's, it's the parking, it's the traffic, it's the schools, and it's the, the height of the structure, the mass of the structure, which weren't, which wasn't as prevalent before, it was a much smaller building. But the, as you said before, the parking requirements for the smaller building per code were met, obviously. And right now, we need a, we need a variance for seven spots.
Correct.
Okay, cool.
Yeah. Well, previously, for example, the, the, one of the variances requested here is, is a six-story building, whereas four is permitted. So previously, the four was within the permitted, um, presumption, if you will, and no variance was required. There is one required now. But we, we, there are seven variances, I think, that are needed. And, you know, they range, in, in my view at least, in importance. You know, the, the snow removal area one, I think that probably is something we can figure out. But, uh, again, it isn't, it isn't this board's job to grant those variances or, or even to really consider them, but we have other objectives and other criteria that we are looking at. And, and there is overlap, of course, because the, the massing is certainly a, a big issue here.
Just one other question, and I read it last night. Does the fire building is on the National Historic Register?
So the fire department building, the Waverly Firehouse, is eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places, and because of that, um, the prior application was referred to the State Office of Historic Preservation and Parks, and they recommended certain construction, uh, protection measures so that no damage to the fire department building occurred during construction.
But there's no requirements other than that?
Correct.
To construct extra, okay.
Right.
All right, let's, uh, let's listen to what the public has to say. So if there's nothing else, I'm gonna open the public hearing.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And, but before we do that, um, I just wanted to mention, if you've seen on the website, we have received several written comments from members of the public, and they're all posted on the town's website.
Okay, and we've probably been given them, you sent them to us?
Yes.
Okay, cool. So then, uh, I make a motion to open the public hearing on this application, twenty-three thirty, two forty-nine Main Street and twenty-seven New Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, it appears on the website, there's, it's like twenty-one letters came in.
Correct.
Wait, sir?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I didn't read all of them. Um, please, come on up. Just state your name, address, and comments.
How you doing? Uh, my name is Joe Santa Maria. I live at fifty-eighth Steward Place, East Chester. The reason I'm here tonight is, uh, the structure of this building is a six-story building, but it's really six and a half, 'cause you're counting the roof with all the units on there. So, it's ten-foot a floor. You go ten up to the top floor, that's six, that's, um, six hundred feet right there. And then you're gonna add another five feet for the roof, so really it's sixty-five feet from the ground up to the top.
It's actually sixty-seven point, sixty-seven point one-two feet.
Okay, so the twenty-five apartments, you just showed on the drawing that a fire truck has to go around the back of New Street to enter the property in the previous application. The problem I have with that is, on New Street, you have residential cars. So a fire truck has a better way of turning in on New Street into this property than on Main Street, which is a wider road?
I, I would think the fire department would know where they can get their equipment and how best to use it. That, this board probably doesn't have an answer for you on that.
Yeah, if you think about it, Main Street's wider, and New Street's narrower. So now, you're telling me the fire truck is easier to go through the back on New Street?
I'm not, we're not telling you anything. The fire department is weighing in.
Okay. Um, also twenty-five apartments, so does the section eight apply to this? That four apartments have to be section eight?
I... No, we, no longer have a section eight program in town.
There's no requirements on any, any...
None that I'm aware of, no.
No? Okay.
So, that's a question we should ask the developer. I imagine he can answer that. They're all private residences. There's no affordable or anything? Rentals, rentals, rentals.
The impact of the school system. I don't think the fire department, the police department have an impact, if you build this complex. But the school system, whatever survey the gentleman did, if you do twenty-five apartments and do one child, that's twenty-five children. That means another class. That means more teachers. That means higher taxes. And that's my biggest concern here. I'm living in town twenty-three years. I raised three kids. They went to the high school. They graduated college. And I wanna stay in town. I really do. But when you have a complex like this being built, you're pushing the people who are currently living here, who are trying to afford to stay here, to move out. And I don't wanna move out. I wanna stay in East Chester. I, I really do. And I moved in two thousand. At that time, the town supervisor was a guy named Jim Kavanaugh. He was before Tony Chalavita. And I remember him saying on, on the town meeting that, "We encourage new buildings. We encourage new houses, because the more they build, the lower your taxes go." Twenty-three years, my taxes haven't been lowered yet. So, to me, that didn't make any sense. He encouraged new additional housing, additional, I'm talking regular one-family houses. I'm not even talking a structure like this. So, to me, that never really came to par, that our taxes would drop. So now, back to the one child, one apartment. That's a classroom right there, twenty-five kids. The average classroom is twenty-two to twenty-four. Are taxes gonna go up? I'm telling you, that, where, where's that money gonna come from?
I hate to tell you, whether we build this or not, our taxes are gonna go up. But I think you're, I think you're, if, if what you're saying were to be true, maybe there is something to be said. But when you're finished, I'll elaborate on that.
Okay, also, the, back to the size of the structure. On New Street, if you're driving southbound, this structure looks like you're driving up to a pyramid. But on Main Street, if you drive, it's not as high. It really isn't. Because the building next to it is a little bit lower. But on New Street, it's a whole different scenario. And if you, uh, if you do that three-D thing, I think that was requested at one of the last meetings, you'll be able to see the three-D version of driving up to the building from New Street. On New Street's outbound, you'll see the size of this structure.
Did we do that? I don't remember. We requested that?
I think that was requested by the zoning board of appeals.
Oh, a drive-by of what it would look like?
A three-D imaging of the building, yes.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
When he's done, let him finish. Let him finish.
I think the main thing is, I got nothing against the builder. I, I really don't. But a perfect example in town is right across from the high school. There used to be a place called Appelanys. They went out of business, they knocked it down, and they sardined thirteen houses into this little cul-de-sac, while it should have been no more than nine. But again, this is back in nineteen ninety-nine, nineteen ninety-eight. This is pretty much the same thing. Instead of sardining all these houses together, you're taking it up. And a building like this, Yonkers, New Rochelle, White Plains, I get it. Small towns like Bronxville, Tuckahoe, East Chester, they don't belong there. I'm sorry. And I, I'll just leave it at that, all right?
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, yeah, you were gonna, don't remember what you were gonna respond to? I thought it was the fly-by thing. Oh, that's the perspective from... Got it. What did the zoning ask for, an actual...
Uh, they asked for a three-D rendering of the building from all sides.
Oh, and that's what he's provided here? Okay, got it. Next public, please come forward.
Hi.
Good evening.
My name is Cheryl Dross. I live at twenty-eight New Street. I spoke at the last zoning board meeting, um, and I have a few concerns about this building. For one... For one, our street is a one-way street. We have no sidewalks for the kids. Already, we have so many issues with traffic. And I said this at the last zoning board meeting. My husband and my daughter were involved in a very serious accident. They were actually parked, and someone was reversing from the driveway of 9th New Street. My, in addition to that accident, my son and his friend were on a scooter, and they were coming out of my driveway. And my son's friend was struck by a postal service employee coming down the street. Our street is so dangerous as it is. The last thing that we need is construction going on in our street and so much additional traffic going on. We have no sidewalk. People don't care that it's a one-way. We have so many people coming up the, the street the wrong way. We try to do what we can, we yell at them. We've asked for additional signage. It doesn't matter. The street is dangerous as it is. I heard a comment about the Fire Department with asking for the wires to be taken down from Main Street and New Street. And then I was a little bit confused with when they said they were going to enter through the, was it through the driveway of the Fire Department? Is that what you said?
It's either the rear or the front.
The rear.
Right, ma'am, if you could just direct comments to the board.
Yeah, okay, so I was just confused about that, so I just wanted to clarify. But, so now the town has to make some sort of entry from the Fire Department fence to allow entry through?
We're going to go back, we'll explain that to you again. We'll come back to that.
Okay.
But you could, what else, what are the comments?
So I'm very confused about that. But why do we have to, as a town, allow entry into that building? Because he doesn't want to pay to take the wires down? I mean, I'm very confused about that. That's very concerning to me, because we don't allow that for everyone else, do we? So, I mean, that's confusing to me. But in addition to that, can I approach to see this?
Sure, just take the microphone with you.
Yep, thanks. So on here, this is the view from New Street. If you look, all of these cars are small sedans. In reality, when you drive down the street, all you see is SUVs. So this looks nice, and it looks like everything is going to fit. But you try parking SUVs in these small spaces when already you're limited to parking on New Street as it is. And these spaces, which this building is very insufficient for parking, you're not going to park like this. SUVs and, and people are not going to have sufficient parking at all. It is unrealistic to think that this building is going to hold enough parking for the residents in there. It's ridiculous to think that this is going to work. People are not going to go in and out the one-way on New Street. They said that it's going to be a one-way in. There's no way that cars are going to go in and out the correct way. I don't know how deliveries are going to get made in this building. Uber Eats, UPS, Amazon, come up and down our block all day long. For a building with 25 units, I mean, you know deliveries are going to happen all the time. People order food all day long. Where are they going to drop food off? Are they going to do it on Main Street or New Street? And where are they going to park? They're going to double park somewhere. Where's all that additional traffic going to go? I mean, those are questions that we have to ask. Is there going to be an additional space for them here? Is, how are people going to know that this is a one-way? And what happens when it becomes congested? What are they going to do? And why are we allowing this six-story building? And if we do allow it, what are other developers going to do? They're going to be like, oh, you know what? You guys allowed it on Main Street. Why can't I build it somewhere else? If you allow it once, it's just going to keep happening. You're going to set a precedent here that, you know what? Everybody's going to come to East Chester and try to do it. It takes one time for somebody to say, you know what? How many variances are you guys going to allow to build this?
Just so you know, this board doesn't deal with the variances.
I get it, I get it. But as a town, if you allow it, you need to do, you need to set the example one time, and everybody's going to come and do it. And we're going to end up like New York City.
Yeah, we're not going to allow that, don't worry.
I hope not.
So, well, just in general. So we're here to try and understand all the concerns, because the concerns that the previous gentleman brought up, and you, we're, we're here to say, okay, this doesn't make sense. So we have traffic consultants that some of the things you brought up, they're going to look at. They're going to figure out packages, what comes in, what the flow is, the number of cars, the size of cars. I mean, we have consultants that look at all this stuff, and we go by them. So it's not going to go unexamined, and we have the opportunity to say we don't agree with what they're doing. So that's our purview right now, as far as schools go. Got it, we understand the, the consultant they hired, that was their consultant. We're going to talk to our consultant about schools, because, you know, obviously, we're going to talk to the school district and see what they say, not just, you know. So we understand that. All the concerns that are being brought forth now, we're not unfamiliar with. We're not allowing a six-story building. They're asking variances. The zoning board is the guys that say yes or no. And then no matter what, before it even goes to zoning, so what happens here is, we make a determination if this has an impact on the community. And if we think it does, and it has a negative deck impact, then this board, we don't even go to zoning. So until this board is satisfied that this isn't going to impact the community, it's not going anywhere.
Yeah.
So it's going to stay here till all of us believe that the impacts that everyone's bringing up are being addressed adequately.
And I do want to bring up something else. I know that it was said that the one- and two-bedroom apartments are really for people without children or for single people, and, you know, that was also brought up at the zoning board meeting. I think it's very foolish to think that you're going to have single people live there, and they're going to be single forever. And if you have an apartment, and you meet someone, and, you know, you want to start a family, I think it's very unrealistic to think that at some point, you're not going to start a family. And you can't kick people out of apartments at any time. You can't just evict them, because they start a family. So those one-bedroom apartments that were once occupied by a single person will likely have school-aged children at some point. So to think that they're going to be single forever without school-aged children is ridiculous. So plan on every apartment in that building having school-aged children. 25 units, unless you're having a senior community here, 25 units, 25 families, school-aged children. And that's, I feel like, what you have to plan for. If this is truly being considered as a 25-unit building, schoolchildren. But...
Great.
Yeah, there's one other thing I wanted to clarify for those watching at home.
Sure.
One of the things that you raised a concern about is that because of the electrical utilities being moved or whatever, and he was getting the town to do it. That's not the case. That is incorrect. Based upon the application, an application was approved with the understanding that the poles would be removed and the utilities would go underground at the cost of the applicant, not the town. It turned out, from what I understand, that the cost became so high to the applicant, they redesigned this plan for consideration for planning and zoning. So I don't want anyone watching at home to think the town is paying for some extravagance or because of the applicant. This is a decision the applicant made, and for those, even those who have objections, when an application is proposed, it's the obligation of planning and zoning boards to review it and issue a determination. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
Oh, I understood that. I understood that he bought the property on Main Street, and it was expensive for him to put the wires underground. So he then brought the property on New Street to make it more beneficial for him when he put the wires underground. But then that was expensive. So then the Fire Department found some sort of easement through their property to get to the building, is what I understood.
So I, I don't really know the history, nor do I, nor do I really care.
Yeah, I don't either, which is why I wanted some clarification. If the Fire Department was using their property as an easement to get to the building, which is why the wires are still there. Because it doesn't make sense to me, if the wires are still staying above ground, why they couldn't do that in the first place, why they had to buy the property on New Street.
So, so I think there's separate issues. I'm not here to answer any of that. But I did say we'd explain the fire circulation. Could you just do that for this woman one more time? So it's clear.
Okay.
Yeah.
You had the circulation map for the fire trucks? If you could just run through that quickly?
Absolutely.
Yeah, this is if you want to see it. Do you want to, do you want to see the fire truck circulation that you asked about? Yeah, okay, you can see it.
So, um, after meeting with the Fire Department and in going through the design with them, they have, maybe I spoke different before, I apologize. They have access either here or here to come in and set up their ladder here. But as of now, they leave their ladder in the back. So they park it in the back until they, they bought a new ladder, it was, it's bigger. I, I, I don't know, this is from their meeting. They're going to, they said that they're going to come out of New Street and come into here and go out this way. But they also could, if they're on another job, they can come into, into, yeah, they can make this turn as well. So we've, we've showed to them that either way that they want. The reason I brought that up is because that's what the Fire Department said, that they leave their ladder back there. It's not that, and they're not coming across the property line. They're going into the street, coming into, onto New Street, coming into the driveway on the, you know, the property here. Or if they're in the front, parked anywhere or wherever, and they can come through Main Street, come back here, and they'll set up, this is their designated location. However they get there, that's their spot. You know, they don't have to go by the one-way if they want to go this way and go out New Street, they can.
Right. So there's no requirement that they come in New Street. Actually, they go wherever they feel is the easiest way to get it.
Absolutely, yes, but they...
We can't really control that.
I just was reiterating what the fire chief told me.
Sure.
That he, how he plans, if, God forbid, this building, you know, God forbid goes on fire, he plans, as of right now, if this building is up, he's going to come out of the back of New Street, out of the, the firehouse, because that's where the, the new ladder is parked.
Fastest way to get there, right.
So, I mean, if, if, they have garages in the front, but, you know, if they've had the ladder in those garages, which they don't keep it right now, I don't know why, you know, that's, that's for their hands.
Yeah, I guess you're right. If they have access from both sides, we can't tell them which way to use. They use whatever's the fastest way to get there.
They're going to, if there's a fire, they're going to come everywhere.
Whichever way they come.
I'm, I'm guessing, by the way, that, and certainly hoping, that there's never going to be a fire in this building. We, and, and so it's, it's not as if we're going to be facing fire trucks there putting out fires twice a month. And whatever the, this building is not going to be built in any way that is not compliant with the fire code. And so I, I think the explanation that you've given before about the, the spaces that would be needed and the dependency on the, on the materials that are used is all just an equation, really, that, that is laid out by the Fire Department, which is simply telling you, if you build this type of thing, this is what, we will need this type of access. If you use a different material, a less combustible material, we, we, these are the standards for that. And so the, the suggestion, I think, that, that the fire, that there is going to be an issue with access by the Fire Department is not something that anyone on this board can really speak to. And it's something that is being addressed or will be addressed by the Fire Department itself. And nothing is going up that is not going to be able to be accessed by the Fire Department readily.
So I'd like to agree with you 100%, but we all know that around 5:30 every night, the fire trucks roll out for false alarms all day long. So fire trucks are going to be pulling in here, because I imagine if there's an alarm, they respond. And I don't know where they park. I guess that's an operations thing, but, yeah, if there's a fire truck, it's going to have to go somewhere.
Their, their staging area, which they, you know, picked was here, so...
If there's ever a place they're not going to have to go out for a false alarm, it's right next door.
Can they just walk over?
The thing is, this building has, is going to have sprinklers, so God forbid there is a fire. It's going to be a very minimal fire, because sprinklers will pick on.
Yeah, it's not about the fire. We know the fire can be fore, it's all, it's all of the traffic associated with false alarms. That's my guess.
More false, false alarm than an actual.
Yeah, it's not going to be real. Cool. Thank you. Other comments from the public?
Hello, my name is Kim. I live at 22A New Street, and my driveway is directly across from the Fire Department driveway. So the main concern I have is with the traffic, just how big it is. We bought our, our house, it's all nice houses, we have all the nice neighbors. We're just going to be surrounded by all these big buildings. I heard them say like, oh, there's other buildings in the town, similar size. I didn't buy a house in Co-op City, and I don't want to be living in Co-op City. Oh, it's big here, so we can keep building them. It's all residential area, and if there's no, if there is like seven spots short, New Street already is packed with cars. Like everybody has their driveway, it's full. And then the street is no parking. It's all full of parking. And then in the winter, you can't park on the street. And then on the other side is Main Street, so I don't know where these, these extra people are going to park, or if they have visitors. The same with like delivery and everything. People start double parking, then you're messing up the flow of traffic. And if you just come down New Street in the morning or in the afternoon with a school pickup, you'll see how packed and crowded it is. And there is no sidewalks or anything. We walk our dog, and it's very, it's very dangerous going around New Street up to Holly Avenue. And if it's, everybody's going to come in a lot that way, it's going to be more traffic and just more dangerous. And those are the main concerns, it's just way too big. And people right there, they're going to be looking out their window into everybody's backyard. And it's just like, that's not what I bought the house for. I want to enjoy my outside area and have people over and just not be surrounded with a big shadow, big building, walking the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Regarding traffic, they've, they've done a traffic study on this?
Um, do you want to address the traffic study you've prepared, Dave?
Or is, when we did previously?
Uh, yes, there was a, a traffic analysis that was prepared by Providence Design Engineering. It was submitted, it looked at circulation. Let's see, it was dated December of 2023. It included an analysis, a brief analysis on traffic and circulation, understanding the, the neighborhood that it, that the project is located in. It did, uh, trip generation, so the number of vehicles that are being generated during the peak hours. So that was included. And it also included an evaluation of parking, because as noted previously, there was a request for variance to go from 43 to 36 parking spaces. And that evaluation included some background from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which supports the traffic consultant's recommendation that 36 spaces is adequate for this particular project, given its location within a community that has goods and services that are within walking distance. You have mass transit that is within close proximity to, to the project as well. But this report has been reviewed by the town's traffic engineer. Again, we would respectfully request an opportunity to prepare more detailed responses and get that to you for the next meeting.
Okay. So it's being followed up on. Right, traffic is obviously for the public. It's being addressed, has been addressed. Our consultants are reviewing it, and it's going to be back and forth about it.
And it will continue to be addressed, yes.
Right, by this board also.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. Any further comments from the public? Please? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dafina. I live in 149 Montgomery Avenue. And I just have a question, like, does East Chester, this district has any plans about the lots that are between the Montgomery and Summerfield Avenue? The, the place that they are like car repair stuff and...
So you're asking us about that site? You're asking us about plans for that site?
Yeah.
And my answer is, I don't know. I, I don't know, it's, it's a, it's a private site, so...
That was, was a project, an application, that was a large-scale...
I, I remember, yeah.
A long time ago, but that project never went through.
Yeah, why, I mean...
Because there are like a lot of trucks that there are parked there. And every morning, and every time that come, they come back, like after 5:00, they leave the trucks running. So all, all the, all the inhalation that we are inhaling from the cars, from the trucks and from the car paint, that, that they are repairing the cars over there, it's like all the kids and we are... it's like all the kids and we all inhaling that.
So...
I understand. That's not before this board.
That's not.
This is a project on Main Street, not...
No, I forgot to mention that I didn't... My question was not with this project, but I just wanted to hear from you guys, is there something going from the district, like...
Yeah, while you're here, that's an enforcement thing, that if trucks are idling...
It is.
Who's she supposed to call?
I would suggest that you do a couple of things. Number one, I would certainly call the police department. If there are trucks that are either at off-hours and they're idling or there's some kind of gases coming from them that are causing an issue, I would contact the police department. I would maybe even contact the planning department to see if there's a violation that they can issue. I would definitely do something in terms of enforcement if they're not operating the way they should be.
As you can see, there's lots of... When we approve things, and Mayor, you saw it, there's conditions that we attach to all the applications. So about trucks and the idling or trucks, too many trucks on a site, that might be something that's a condition of the approval of that. And that's been there forever. That site has been there forever.
Yeah, yeah, for that, I was just wondering, like, is... Do you know, like, is there any plans about that?
So to answer that question, we don't really know what he wants to do with the site. As you said, previously, they did. I have no idea what's happening to that site now. But if you have comments about, as you said, comments about trucks, call the police department and maybe it's... That's not a building violation, number of trucks around it.
Well, we can take a look into it in the building department.
If they're idling at off-hours, it could be a violation of the local law that the enforcement officer will go out, take a look. So call the planning department, and I would call both. I would call the police department and I would call the planning department to see if there's a violation that can be issued, okay?
Thank you very much, guys. Thank you. Have a good day.
Further comments, please?
Hi, Board. My name is Dimitri. I live in 22A New Street, right across a construction site. So my only question is, when the construction is going on, like, how are you gonna mitigate the noise from, I guess, like, foundation work and drilling, excavation?
Well, you should address your questions to the board.
Yeah, I heard it. That's your question?
Yeah, yeah, because I work from home, so it's like, you know, been... There's construction in Marble Dale, construction in Low Tuckahoe, and like, all, like, you know, for the last couple of years, it's been like, non-construction.
Your question obviously isn't premature. It's a concern that you have and you have it now. I would say that when we have applications in front of us, we do, we, as a board, require whoever's doing it to put... To understand what's gonna be built, when it's gonna be built. They can monitor things when they, you know, there's traffic patterns when something's on the construction to make sure that the traffic flow isn't... Hasn't been detrimentally affected by the construction. And as far as noise, we could obviously, if the project ever comes back, we could require that whoever's constructing it come up with noise criteria and monitor it. And there's all sorts of things that we could do to make sure that your environment isn't affected.
And also as a condition to... Assuming the project goes through, there is also a construction plan that is, you know, presented and approved that has to be adhered to in terms of times of day, deliveries, noise levels, et cetera. So that is definitely a process as part of this. But we're still finding out information.
So the reason I said this is premature is not to spook anyone who's here or listening. There's no construction plan as of today. Okay. Right? We're just here to listen and your concern is valid. And so I wanna address it. But as was said, this is way in the future, if it were to transpire.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Please?
Joseph Santa Maria, 58 Steward. Infrastructure, has the consultants done a survey on the infrastructure of a 25-unit apartment? Meaning the sewers and the water on New Street or Main Street could handle the complex that's being proposed?
So... We're gonna ask you to be a member of the board because you have lots of questions that we address very clearly. Because that's a great question and that's exactly what we address. So that's a concern. It's a concern that is addressed by consultants. They make sure that there is enough capacity. And not only do they make sure there's enough capacity, usually when a development is put through, there's studies done of the existing system to make sure that there's no leak. And we try and actually fix it before this goes in to make the flow actually a little bit better than it was before. So that's all studied by consultants. The applicant comes up with how much he thinks he's adding and it's studied to see if there's capacity. So absolutely, all the utilities are studied.
Those comments were raised by the town's consulting civil engineer in its memo for this meeting. So if you wanted to see that, it is posted with the agenda materials for tonight's meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I wasn't kidding about being on the board. If there's no other questions... If there's no other questions, we're gonna wrap it up for the night. Cool, so they'll be back next meeting.
Sure, so I think, kind of, just to summarize what our next steps will be for the applicant, I think it will be reviewing and addressing comments raised in our consultant's memorandum. Perhaps providing additional... Some additional information about the visual impacts of the building and maybe a little bit more information about the comparable buildings. They're, you know, they're... Where they're located, what zoning district, how tall they actually are, whether they were, as of right, if you will, when they were constructed or permitted by variance. We could also refer this application to the Eastchester School District. And we could get some additional input from the fire department if you're interested in that.
Sure. I guess as far as parking goes, all we really can offer is that it meets code. I guess we don't, right? If we feel there's not enough parking, regardless if it meets code, obviously, we can say that.
Correct. It does not meet our zoning laws' parking requirements.
Right. Okay, so we can make a recommendation, yeah, okay, got it. Okay, that's it. Anything else?
Just one question. So when you're making the referral to the school district, will that be done through your office?
Yes, if you wanna coordinate that through our office, we can provide the submission that you've submitted for tonight or a supplemental submission. We can work on that after this meeting.
Yeah, I think the material that we've provided provides more than enough information for the school district to evaluate this project.
Sure.
So we'll coordinate with you on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So then I make a motion to continue the public hearing on this application to 49 Main Street and 27 New Street to... Till the board's May meeting, which is... Do you have a date?
The 23rd.
23rd, May 23rd. Next meeting is May 23rd. So please come back. And then, that being said, there's nothing else from us, guys, and I'm going to...
Well, if you're gonna... I'm gonna second your motion to continue the...
Oh, wait, in second? Oops. So I made the motion to continue second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We never did that before, you know? It's something new. So then I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the April 25, 2024 planning board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Great, thanks.